Good evening, everyone, and welcome to a meeting of the Hundred and Central Regional High School Board of Education. Please be advised that this and all meetings of the board are open to the public and media, consistent with the Open Public Meetings Act, and an advance notice required therein has been provided. Meeting notice was also posted in the boardroom of the upper school campus, sent to the Kerr News, Star Ledger, Express Times, and the Hundred and County Democrat, and sent to the Clerks of Delaware Township, East Amolet Township, Flemington Borough, Raritan Township, Reddington Township, and the public opportunity to be heard is shown on the agenda. Please stand for flag salute.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Republic. Which stands our nation under God, indivisible, liberty, justice for all.
Thank you, folks. At this point, Jimon can have a roll call, please.
Dr. Charney.
Here.
Mr. Davidson. Obers. Mrs. Mrs. Hughes.
Sorry, here I was muted.
Mrs. Kellogg.
Here.
Mr. Nickel.
Here.
Dr. Nguyen.
Here.
Mrs. O'Donnell.
Here.
Mr. Richard.
You're muted, Rob.
Here.
Got it.
Mr. Panico.
Here. All right, thank you, Jimon. At this time, kind of a motion and a second to approve the regular and executive session minutes of January 25th, 2021, please.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion, a second is ready discussion. Hearing none, kind of a roll call vote, please, Jimon.
I apologize, I have the names in order of our Zoom meeting, and I didn't have, I didn't mix them back up. Okay, Dr. Charney.
Yes.
Mr. Davidson. Mrs. Hughes.
Yes.
Mrs. Kellogg.
Yes.
Mr. Nickel.
Yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Yes.
Mr. Richard.
Yes.
Mrs. O'Donnell.
Yes.
Mr. Panico.
Yes.
She carries.
Thank you. Dr. Moore, do we have a student council report?
We do, we have Ms. Cale in the audience here. I'm gonna click on the allow to talk button and see if this works for her. Okay, I gotta bring her up to the panel. Here she comes. Hello.
Hi. Good evening, everyone. So I'm Aria, and I'm gonna be presenting tonight's report. I just wanna give a quick heads up and let you guys know that it's a little bit longer than usual, but that's just because we have a lot of upcoming events. So to get started, class of 2023 is currently holding a fundraiser through Gertrude Hawk, and orders will be shipped on March 1st, and we encourage families to order in time for Easter. And the Key Club sent out 300 cards to the Hundred and Medical Center for Valentine's Day. So on February 17th, students attended an activity block from 1:30 to 2:00 p.m., and that introduced the Sources of Strength Organization, and it allowed for students and their block to be teachers to start a conversation. And the goal of the activity was to recognize all the different sources of strength that we have, that we can tap into when we feel down. Those include mental health, family support, positive friends, mentors, healthy activities, generosity, spirituality, and medical access. So the plan is to continue with these activity blocks about once a month, so that this information isn't interfering with morning classes, and it allows students to have an opportunity to discuss noncurricular items that are important to school. So some of the student feedback to Mr. Brandt that regarded the activity block was more time to discuss the concepts at hand, and that students would prefer to have more background information on the topic rather than being put on the spot. I know that a lot of my peers and teachers didn't really know what the activity block was about, so just having a quick overview, we thought that would be really more helpful. We also felt that conversations such as mental health can be a little bit heavier and harder to talk about on Zoom or Meet, especially when you have peers who you might not be as comfortable with. So to resolve that problem, we think that students should be allowed to choose the teacher who they wanna talk to, so they just feel more comfortable, and to also change up the classes for the activity blog, just so that we can mix it up a little bit more. A question that was asked by the student representative was that a survey was sent out at the beginning of the year, which gathered student input on school. Representative meetings that student council hosts are great for conversations, but since most of us are leaders, they are most accurate representation of the entire student body's feeling about the school. So Mr. Brandt said that the plan is to send out a new survey to the students, just to gauge and see how they're feeling about school, since the last one was sent out in the fall. And some of these questions will be adapted to see if the conditions have approved or not, and some of them will remain the same. And the creation of this new survey will happen at the March Representatives Meeting. And then there was also a student suggestion for a mid-year slash first quarter common survey, which would be sent out by the teachers directly to the students. It's kind of like an end of the year evaluation, but right before semester two starts, and that can just help teachers to understand how their students are learning, and so that they can adjust their teaching to better help the students. So in terms of activities and upcoming events, the Speech and Debate Team would like to congratulate the following students who advanced to elimination rounds at the Pensbury Falcon Invitational on February 5th through the 7th. So Salem Ombo, Brandon Quinter, Brian Beckham, and Alex Simon were double opt-in finalists in the Varsity Public Forum Debate, and Isabella Chen was a quarter-finalist in the JV Lincoln Douglas Debate. New members are always welcome on the team, and meetings are held every Monday at 2:00 p.m. Let's raise some dough for Hundred and Central Main Booster Club. The Chimney Rock Inn will be donating a portion of all homemade frozen raw 55 sales to the Hundred and Central Main Booster Club. You can pre-order online on Monday, February 22nd. Seniors, remind your parents to check their email for a message regarding baby photos. Well, we cannot wait to show you this year's... Sorry. This year's yearbook with current photos of your student, let's throw it back to the dapper days of so long ago. So the yearbook will be collecting baby pictures from February 15th through March 5th, and you can email the photos at babypics@hcrhs.org. The Red Cross Club will be holding their next blood drive on Monday, March 15th, at the Flemington Presteberry Church from 3:30 to 8:30 p.m., and the address is 8 East Main Street in Flemington, and you must make an appointment to donate. So in terms of clubs, the government and... Sorry. So in terms of clubs, the Government and Politics Club is gonna be having their first meeting on Tuesday, February 23rd at 2:00 p.m., and it's where students who have different political ideologies can respectfully have an open forum to debate and discuss the current issues. The first meeting of the Asian Student Alliance is gonna be taking place on Monday, February 22nd at 2:00 p.m., and that's for Asian students and allies, and ASA is a safe place to talk and spread cultural awareness and advocacy and strive for inclusion. And the next Latinx Alliance meeting is Monday, February 22nd at 2:00 p.m. The next Youth and Government meeting will be held on Thursday, February 25th at 2:00 p.m. on Zoom, and there's a Google Classroom where the meeting link can be found. Interact Club will be holding their next meeting on Monday, March 1st at 2:00 p.m., and the Astronomy Club will be having their next meeting on Thursday, March 4th at 2:00 p.m. as well. So the pulse is the Hundred and Central's Gay Straight Alliance, and they're looking for new members to help fundraise, raise awareness, and support others in a safe space environment. Their meetings are currently online, and they're held every other Tuesday at 1:30 p.m. And lastly, a program called Cyber Start America helps uncover, educate, and funnel students with the talent for this industry into career paths via life-changing scholarship opportunities. Cyber Start America is a self-paced program that you can play right from your Chromebook or personal computer. If you like puzzles, games, challenges, this could be an opportunity for you to learn and possibly earn some scholarship cash. If you have questions or need a mentor, you can contact Mrs. Mariner for more information. And that's all I have.
Thanks, Aria. If I heard you correctly, the Chimney Rock Inn fundraiser is today, right? Is that what you said?
Yeah.
All right, so if you guys want your, want your frozen Chimney Rock 55s, get them in.
Thanks, Aria, so much.
I think Miss O'Donnell has a...
A comment?
Yep.
I just wanted, I'm on mute, I wanted to thank you, Aria, just for your report. You know, they're always so helpful, and this one in particular, just really, I'm so impressed by how overarching and inclusive it is. I know that you guys do great work, but I'm hearing about, you know, more pockets of Central being involved and being mentioned, and that's really, you should be commended for that, and the whole student council, so thank you.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Aria, so much, and again, it's great to see so much activity going on as well as we, as we not get used to where we are in the pandemic and our shortened hybrid schedule, and we'll talk more about that later, but just nice to see that everybody's finding ways to remain active and connected. So thank you, Aria, I'm gonna move you back into the audience, and... There we go.
All right, thank you, Dr. Moore. So this time, there's one item of correspondence noted on the agenda, all board members have received that. So I'll turn it over to you, Dr. Moore, for your superintendent's update.
Thank you so much, and thank you, everybody, for joining us tonight. We have a few things to go through, but I wanna spend the bulk of my report tonight updating on our reopening progress and the plans for expanding opportunities for in-person instruction. So what I'll do here is share my screen so that I can begin to present to all of you on these items. And so tonight, you know, we always start these conversations reiterating the three priorities that we have in this work that we're doing, always. But, but most pointedly this year, with all of the public health challenges that we're facing through the pandemic, but we always remember and we always wanna continue to reiterate that we're balancing all that we're doing for public health with equally important priorities in education and wellness for our students. And it's, it's been a careful balancing act through, gosh, since, since a year ago, almost. At this point, we're almost a year now from, from the initial introduction of remote education at the beginning of the pandemic. But these, these three priorities have been in continual balance and continual sort of revision and reexamination. So we've talked a bit, and I've shared with parents through communications, and also here in the Board of Ed meetings, the presentations that I give in prior months. We are planning now to expand in-person instruction to four days for any student who desires that program. Right now, we have a hybrid schedule of two days with a remote Wednesday, and then two days for our other group. And, and now we're looking to expand to four days for any student who wants that program, continuing on with Remote Wednesday for the time being. So we have had two weeks of a yellow classification from the state with the data heading in the right direction, I'll talk a little bit about that in a moment. And those, that was, that was the requirement that I was looking for and that I posed to the board and also to the community, that when we saw at least two weeks of a yellow classification with the data heading in the right direction, then we would begin to move forward on these plans. It's happening a bit more quickly, quite honestly, than we expected it to, but that's, that's good news. So we are now targeting the 8th or the 15th to expand access to a four-day program for students who want it. We have some work to do this week to register parents who wanna, who wanna expand their students' in-person instructional program, and based on those numbers, we'll begin to look at either the 8th or the 15th. We also have some supplies and some other things on order that are on their way and that are important parts of this expansion, and I'll talk about these items in a moment as well. But by, by the 15th, assuming that we're continuing in yellow and the data are heading in the right direction, we will be expanding to additional students who wanna attend for four instead of two days in person. We, as I mentioned, we're gonna ask our parents to register for that program through Aspen in the coming days. So a couple of other points here to bring up quickly, spring break begins on April 2nd, and the reason that I mention this is because we need continued vigilance in our community. We have had cases, and I'll update you on the numbers. Of course, we've had our cases throughout the year, but we have seen certainly where a lot of our cases have come from community activities, social gatherings, and some other things. You know, there's family exposure that no one can really help in oftentimes, but, but there are steps that we wanna make sure everybody remains cognizant of, that they should be taking out in the community, everything from masking to hygiene and distancing and all of those things that are recommended and that have become second nature to all of us. So we need to continue those, because if we start to see any slide, and I'm not just talking about a slide in the numbers for our region, you know, going orange again, but if we start to see a spike in cases at Central, even if our region is in good shape, we may find ourselves in a situation where we have to retreat back into the group-one, group-two hybrid, or depending on the scenario, I would hate to see it and even hate to say it, you know, even, you know, something that we haven't had to do, which is extended virtual. We've been very fortunate that we haven't had to do that, and I think it's actually a testament to all the work that everyone here at Central, including parents and students, is doing. But we do have that specter out there if we, if we don't remain vigilant, not just in school, but out in the community as well. So to update you on our cases through February 21st, so that's as of yesterday, we had totaled for the school year 97 student cases, so that's 14 this month. And if you remember my, my presentation last month, we were seeing higher numbers in last month's update. We also have 27 staff cases total this year, including six since February 1st, and again, that additional six is fewer than we saw being added in January. So we're definitely seeing the slowdown here at Central, and I'll show you that in a moment as well. The new staff cases do include, and I've communicated with the board and the community about this, some incidents of likely spread between staff members on campus. We did not find any failure in protocols that led to those potential person-to-person spread between staff members. We, you know, whether it was distancing or masking or anything else, you know, people were doing what we have all always asked everyone to do. So there was no smoking gun in terms of a reason there, we just, we just can't rule out that there was spread, although we don't, we don't have a specific thing to point to as a cause, nor do we have any incidents still of spread among students or between staff and students. So we, we do continue to stand on a record that we believe shows success in our efforts to mitigate spread on campus. Here is a breakdown of cases as we've seen them across the year from the very first weeks of school. So we're going back to September there, only the weeks in which we have cases are listed here. I think there's one week in September in which we did not have a case. Everything else, you know, every other week, we've had at least some cases. Now, this is updated up through the end of last week, and you can certainly see where here is Halloween with, you know, week 44 with its associated and following spike. You know, here was Thanksgiving with the spike that occurred after that, and of course, after winter break, you can see the really small bar just to the left of this green area when we were on winter break, and, and we wonder if there was some lag in reporting that week as well, because we weren't receiving a lot of information from the Department of Health. So that spike you see in the following week, some of those cases may actually belong to that first week in, in 2021. But you can definitely see a spike, and I think we mirror the spike that's gone on in our read that's, that's happened in our region, and of course, across our state and our country, where we saw definitely a spike in cases after the holidays, after winter break, and we're starting to see again a decline. So last week, we reported two cases, and we have a little bit of a slow start, knock on wood, for this week as well. So this shows us where here at Central, our data are pointing in the right direction as well as they are with the state reports. Now, the regional classification I mentioned, we've seen two weeks in yellow in our region, where the three counties, Hundred and Mercer and Somerset, is our region. And you can see in the report that was delivered to us on the 11th from the week of 2/6, and then the report we just got at the end of last week from the prior week. You can see not only have we seen two weeks in yellow, but everything's kinda heading in the right direction, and yellow is spreading across the state. These are good signs, these are good signs. We, of course, have concerns about new variants of the virus. We have concerns about, as I mentioned earlier, worries that, that people might become a little complacent in the, in the masking and hygiene that were, that were always so, so, that seemed to be so instrumental in our success here. So we need to remain vigilant, but we also need to be aware of the potential for those new variants to cause an increase in cases. But so far, again, knock on wood, we haven't, we haven't seen that. I have shown you this graph before, just tracking the three, the three metrics in the state's regional classification system. The lighter pink up top is the case count, the raw case count, and that lines up to the axis on the left. And then the other two down below are percentages, they line up to the axis on the right. You can see the percent positivity, which is the next one down, and then the percent CLI, which is the percent of COVID-like illness, the percent of emergency room cases dealing with COVID-like illness. And again, you can see everything is heading down. As we moved out of orange, this graph starts from the moment we went into orange in mid-November, and here we are a few months later, back in yellow, and you can see things are, again, heading down lower than they've been since, in several months. So we are, we're pointed in the right direction and continue to draw hope from this, from this situation. Now, we have already done some expansion, and I know we've talked about how we've had a four, a four-day program for at least a couple of months here at Central with a handful of students, between 50 and 75 students, at any point were engaged in a four-day program. Last week, although we only had a couple of days last week in person, we expanded with all special ed students, and I wanna share a little bit of information about how that panned out for our students in special education. So on February 15th, we invited those students to begin attending four days, and this is how that broke out for those students, and I'll walk through the, the highlights here. So looking at the numbers all the way to the right, the, the rose in orange, about 44%, 43.9% of our students in special education stayed in the program they were in. So we had some number of students staying in a two-day program, they did not choose to move forward into four days. Some number of students there, 28.3% staying remote. They didn't choose to come in for a two-day or a four-day program, and then we had that number of students staying, who were already in a four-day program, staying in the four-day program. In green, you see about 35.7% of our students in special education moved to come in person more often. And the largest movement there was from our two-day to our four-day program. So about 20% of these students moved from two-day to four-day through this invitation. And you can see also, though, at the bottom, that there were some students who stepped back to less in person. So we had 9% of students, 20, 20.3% total, but 9% students moving from four-day back to two-day. We had 11% moving from two-day to remote, and a very small number of our four-day students moving out entirely to remote. And some of this includes some quarantine and some other things as a result of illness, but those, those numbers aren't, aren't, you know, aren't, aren't significant in all of this, but I did wanna mention that, that those, that those students who might be quarantined for illness or close contact are also counted in here. It's hard to, it's hard to, to separate them. So all in all, what we see in this is, as a result of this invitation, we're at a point where we went from 35% of our students in special education in person to about 45, 46% of students in special education in person on any given day. So we increased our number of in-person students through this invitation by about 10, 11%. And it wasn't just brand-new students coming in, there was some back and forth, and we came out of it with still about 40% of our students in special education on remote. So it's hard to generalize from special education out to our general education program, because there are different considerations and opportunities in special education. Those students had, for example, a four-day program already, so that throws off our generalizations a little bit. But this does lead us to continue to believe that we'll see, you know, not all of our students opting for a four-day program as we move forward, and, and we expect to continue to see about 35% or maybe a little bit more of our students remaining on fully remote, and then some number of students staying in for just two days each week. So as we gather that information from parents in the coming days, we'll have a much better sense of what the, the load on our classrooms might begin to look like as we bring more students in, and then that will help us determine whether we can do this, this addition of students in person on the 8th or the 15th, or if we're splitting it up into shifts, so that we can absorb that all a little bit, a little bit more gradually. So I do wanna mention too, where we've seen some shifting guidance and some additional steps that we're exploring here as we continue down this road. CDC, of course, in the past couple of weeks, has released new guidance for schools. It's, it's an odd time in the school year for, for guidance to change on us, but, and the Department of Health in New Jersey has to absorb that guidance and determine how they're going to, how they're going to change any rules for us if they decide to. But the, the new CDC guidance did propose a different classification scheme than what the federal government was using, and it's a bit more akin to what's going on in New Jersey, although some of the numbers between green and yellow and orange are a little different. I don't know that this will change anything for us in New Jersey, but I did wanna mention it. The guidance does continue to recommend continuation of precautions, including distancing to the maximum extent possible, that still remains not a mandate, but a maximum extent possible kind of guideline. And notably, the, the CDC guidance does not prioritize vaccination for educators. In fact, says that schools do not need vaccines for educators in order to reopen successfully. But, you know, we have more to say about that and have had plenty to say about that along the way. So a couple of things, we believe that we can be successful without broad educator vaccination, but I do wanna point out that tonight's agenda does include a resolution with a statement to the governor to reprioritize people who work in schools in the vaccination eligibility pool, and I'll, I'll talk more about that later on in my report. We also have never claimed that we could maintain six feet of distance in our reopening plans, even going back to September. And, and that's certainly true as we expand, but we have been successful in mitigating spread where distancing was not possible. And I continue to go back to the, the numbers of students who have been quarantined as a result of being a close contact of a person who was ill. We're not seeing any of those students get sick. So what, what that tells us is that our other steps that we've been taking in masking and hygiene have been instrumental in keeping people safe and healthy on campus. Not that we don't believe that distancing is important, it's just that we believe that if we're balancing it with all of those other steps, we can, we can move forward safely to expand our in-person instruction and then answer those education and wellness priorities that we also need to answer alongside our public health priorities. We also note that the CDC guidance emphasizes testing in a way that we haven't had the state or federal government talk to us about testing in schools, testing for coronavirus. But I continue to point out that broad-scale regular testing is not really feasible for a school of our size. We go to examining, for example, the different kinds of tests that are available, and there, there are different options for monitoring, but, but when you're talking about testing of students in a Broadway, you're talking about rapid tests that deliver very quick responses, there are a couple of different kinds of rapid tests, but they are notoriously inaccurate for different reasons, depending on the kind of test. One, for example, if, if you're, if you're not already symptomatic, a rapid test may not necessarily pick up an infection. And another, if, if you're not delivering those tests in a really strict and, and, well, in, in, through a strict protocol, then, then the accuracy is, is confounded a bit as well. And the, the gold standard in the PCR test, those can take days, sometimes even longer, to yield results back. And so then you've not really accomplished much in, in testing for a snapshot in the moment. If it takes a week for the results to come back. So testing is not something that we see many schools doing. Many schools doing and and where we do see it happening, it's it's not necessarily yielding actionable information, but. You know, testing from our medical and Department of Health partners continues to be something that they talk about as most valuable in a diagnostic setting. If you have symptoms, is it COVID? And so we leave that to to the medical community to to do that kind of testing. We also, and I mentioned earlier, some additional steps and some things that we're purchasing that we're waiting on delivery. We have additional barriers. So at hundred and central, we have scores of of these these freestanding rolling barriers. They're. About five, six feet high. They're Plexiglas barriers. They're on wheels, and we can position them around desks and and in other places. To create some barrier between folks. So we have many more of those barriers coming on campus to deal with any. Classrooms where we feel it might be a little tighter than we're comfortable, especially if we're having trouble separating teacher and students. And we're also going to lay in a lot more face shields to provide some additional. Level of barrier and protection in the event that that anybody needs it in a situation where, again, we might find some some. A tight room or other situation that might concern us about exposure. New masking guidelines, we have received. Information about double masking and different kinds of masks. So we're we're working with the Department of Health to understand a bit more about what that means for schools. And also exploring some additional monitoring strategies for specific populations, not testing necessarily, although. Testing may have a role for us in certain populations of students, so we'll talk more about that as we continue to learn more about that. And I end kind of again where I began with a reiteration of these principles. Public health, education and wellness. And again, just the reminder that these have to operate in balance. That it's very difficult for me, especially at this point in in our in our. COVID era of education to to say that. Education and wellness goals and priorities need to be. Subject or underneath public health. We've done a great job on the public health. Priorities and and the testament to everyone who works at Central and everyone who works with us. Parents and students certainly included. To help us keep everyone safe and and to offer what we've been able to offer. But it certainly has not been enough. Education and wellness goals. Now, we we continue to believe require us to move forward and expand, and we feel that we have. The situation in in the declines in data that we've been seeing to support that expansion. So this week, later this week, we're hoping to. Ask parents to register for the four day program, and then based on the response that we see, we'll start. Preparing with a target of March eighth and or March fifteenth to begin bringing those students in for four days. That. Is my reopening update. I'll pause there. If there are any questions, I do have a few more items on my report. Before I turn it back over to you, Mr. Panico, but if there's any question or thought on anything that I've presented so far. Here's here's a chance.
Yeah, can you differentiate or or provide a little more context on the differentiation differentiation between? Those two sort of ramp updates. I think you said the fourth and the fifteenth. Eighth and fifteenth and what? You know, why one versus the other?
So we'd ideally like to target the eighth. We just need to see how many students we're dealing with, and and we're also looking at those supplies coming in, the the barriers and the face shields. So if we find ourselves with. More students and the supplies aren't quite in place yet, then we would be thinking about maybe bringing those students in in shifts, and we can prioritize. Students in different ways. We might look at, you know, bringing juniors and seniors back first or vice versa, you know, but we're hoping we're hoping to 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 be able to be in a position to bring in. As many as possible on on the eighth. From there, based on how it goes, we may see additional interest even down the road and where we've been really flexible. In students coming and going because of the numbers now that we're dealing with, we might have to set some more. Structured windows around the coming and going, so we might be looking at kind of two week cycles of of allowing students to make a shift. From from this from this point forward.
Thank you.
Jeff, I have a question. So on will students or parents have the opportunity to change their mind? Meaning like if they choose not to right away, but then, you know, maybe April decide that. You know, that's when they're ready. Can they opt in to come in at that point, or is it? Only based on the date that we'd like for them to start?
No, I think we'll we'll be we'll be ready to continue to welcome students back. And again, we're thinking two week intervals. Might work at first to offer students the opportunity to. So if you miss, if you miss it the first time around, you want to, you want to wait a little longer. You want to see how everything's going or or for any other reason. At home, it doesn't feel like the right time to expand in person. You can certainly opt to come to come on campus later on. We might just have to do it. In two week shifts rather than approach it as fluidly as we've had, where students can basically choose at any time. We just might need to organize it a little bit better so that we can keep an eye on the impacts. Dr. Charney.
So I'm curious. We will have still a virtual audience and in person audience. Are there anticipated methodologies that teachers? Will implement or the their different approaches that teachers might implement with larger. In person versus. Virtual audience, or do we anticipate? You said thirty five percent. Is that going to change? The teaching approach? And and if so, how?
So we still see that the teacher. Not only continues to need. To be flexible for different students in different situations, but but we want to continue to afford that flexibility to the teacher. To 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 do what's best for the course, because we we're not necessarily going to see students evenly. Distributed across across the school as they come back. We might have some classes that have more students. Coming in and some classes that have less, just based on how it plays out. We can't necessarily control that. But we do. We do believe that we're going to continue to have some students who are only here for two days and remote the other two. Some students who are here for four days, and then some students who are remote for the entire week. So the teacher will continue to have to have the flexibility to to rig up their lessons in the best way that 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 they can. To to get the course material and stuff across to those kids. Today, that's involved lots of different things, everything from. Synchronous live instruction where where kids are watching from home, what's going on in the classroom when it's not their day in. To things where where teachers have maybe sort of shifted assignments on different days for different students based on what their what their. What their status is. So one of the big brainstorming topics for us as we continue into this next phase will be. What are people seeing and how do we respond to it in the grounds that we continue to move the curriculum forward as 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 much as we possibly can? So flexibility will continue to be the the watchword there for our teachers and and also for our families and kids. Ms. Calat, go ahead.
What is the level of comfort of the staff and the teachers with expanding in person, you know, the in person population?
So I think this is anxious for everyone. It's anxious for me. It's it's an expansion from something that we've been doing successfully. But as we've surveyed staff, we've seen broad support for the notion that we certainly have to do more. But we are, you know, we're having good conversations, regular meetings with our labor associations and with folks. To get at, you know, what are the specific things that we're not necessarily seeing or that we're? We're not prioritizing the way that we need to to answer some of those concerns. So that's where some of the. Things that we've talked about with purchasing of barriers and and face shields have come from. And there, you know, there are lots of other things that that we're in talks on to to try and. Get over some of those individual concerns with everybody and make everybody as comfortable as possible. It is. It is a leap. I mean, it's a leap. Forward from where we are, but you know, I'm confident. In in folks' understanding that that's that that's necessary, but we, you know, we always and and will continue to have things to work through. To make sure that, you know, everybody feels. Feels like it's 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 going well and that we're doing everything we can, but but good conversations, open, open dialogue. That's been sort of the. The way that we've approached it all year, and and that's how we're going to continue to approach it through the through the spring. The one thing I do want to reiterate is, again, if we see anything in the data that leads us to to have any concerns about the virus. Spiking again or or any concerns on campus, then we will step back, you know, we can always step back to where we came from. In order to continue to 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 maintain, you know, any any. Well, to mitigate any concerns that we might have that might be coming up in case counts across the community or or in our school. Anything else? No. All right. Well, so the the thing I'll point out now, it's I'm I'm jumping out of order a little bit on my report, but the thing I'll point out now. In the organizational items section of our agenda tonight, you know, we do have. A a resolution. Calling for the governor to and the state to to prioritize educators. In in the delivery of vaccine, and I repeat what I said earlier, that we've seen a lot of success without the vaccine. And that educational wellness imperatives that we have must continue to drive us toward. Offering more in person instruction, but we we won't reach and and can't say that we value. All that schools have to be doing for our children. We can't reach and can't say that we value getting back to normal. Unless our educators can can get the vaccine. So while we've had success and we feel confident in being able to move forward. We we're never going to get there until the vaccine is is. More available to our teachers. Right now, teachers aren't eligible as a group. In fact, as we've discussed in mid January. Teachers were pushed back in line, all educators, not just teachers, all educators were pushed back in line as a large group of others were put in front. And given access to a still too small supply of vaccines. So teachers getting the vaccine is is certainly something that. Is important in all schools and all of us getting closer and closer to normalcy, and we we want to continue to. To advocate for that reprioritization as we move forward, because we're we're not, we're not yet there. Additionally, tonight on the agenda, you can see our students of the month. We have our Hibbin Suspension Report here as well, our monthly Hibbin Suspension Report, and I did want to mention. National School Counselor Week, which was at the beginning of this month. And in this context, you know, all of us are dealing with a lot of shifts under our work. But no role at our school really has a monopoly on that, but counselors have always been. At the tip of the spear through those shifts shifts that have been. I think happening since a long time before the pandemic. Our counselors have spent, I think, decades honing skills for all of the support and guidance. For not just a new kind of school that we want to offer, but the very strange kind of school that we all found ourselves in starting last March. So I and and we all, I think, thank you, our counselors, our Saks, our therapists, our counseling partners. All of you, you know, are are deeply appreciated for the work that you do for our kids and their families. And, you know, I thank you with recognition that we we don't thank you enough. So so thank you all, and. That's. School counselor week earlier earlier this month, didn't want tonight to go by without that mention. And with that, Mr. Panico, I believe I am. Finished. Yep, I've covered everything on my report list tonight. Thank you all.
Thank you, Dr. Moore. Now we move into the point of the agenda. Or we open the floor for residents comments for any items on the agenda. So these are items. Actually on agenda items. If you have comments about those. Please raise your hand in the Zoom. If you're on the phone, you can press star nine. As with all residence forums at hundred and central, there are a maximum of thirty minutes in length. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes, and nobody lasts, nobody will have to speak twice unless all those wishing to speak have had their turn. So we do have the online forum that as well, no, no responses there. So we will go to the people in person, and I see one person with their hand up. We will jump you up in. When you come up in, please state your name and your address for the record. We do have to have that. Please remember, these are for items on the agenda. So Dr. Moore, if you will pull, it says, I think it's like.
Good evening, the community.
Yes, can you please state your name and address for the agenda?
Hi, Toby. This is Main Street, Flemington, New Jersey. Moving Reddington. The the opening, when you guys open. Would it be prudent to wait till maybe after spring break, because that might. Cause a surge? And it's probably the last main event. In the school year where you might have a surge because of non related school activity. They only have about two months left. For in person instruction, but might not be prudent to wait till after that time period, just in case there is a spike due to spring break activities. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Moore. I don't know if you have something you want to say there.
Again, yeah, thank you. Thank you for that question. This has been. You know, the the struggle in this is trying to to find the the timing that again balances all of the priorities that we have, and. The thing that I continue to be very concerned about in. Yet in the context of all the public health concerns, and the one that you raises is a concern that with spring break, do we see? An additional spike because people are gathering like we saw coming out of winter break. It's very. Very possible, and we're asking the community to help us. Make sure that doesn't happen, because if that happens after spring break, the way that it happened. After winter break, then we have to take steps backwards. We have to go back to a hybrid. Sort of two day, two day sort of model, or or, you know, depending on how bad the spike is, we we're always facing the specter of potentially having to close. For fully remote for some extended period of time, and we don't want to do that, so we need. We need help there. But I continue to be concerned about in our educational and wellness priorities. The 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 crisis, and I I don't use that word lightly, the the crisis that our students are under right now for not being in school. And I can't say that that's true of all students. I think some students are are doing well on remote and hybrid and and they're they're faring this well. But by the same token, we're seeing increasing disengagement. In the numbers of students who are failing courses and multiple courses. Those numbers are starting to get a little bit better, but not quickly enough, and I shared some of that last time. We're starting to be very concerned about. Students being socially disconnected and isolated. We're having students in crisis as a result of that, so so those are situations that are beginning to deeply concern us. And we we do also have to, in all of this, recognize that. While while I mentioned earlier, there there is some potential anxiety in these steps forward, and and I understand that from from anyone who holds it. We do still have the opportunity for students to remain fully remote and and to and to stay on two day if if four days isn't isn't enough for them. So we we in in balancing all of these things, we think that this is the right time to do it. And and that there will. Unfortunately, it feels like there would always be a reason to wait for some next time. But in all of that, I do want to make sure that that we reiterate, we we do have a commitment to continuing to monitor. And to step back if we're seeing any spike. So if spring break is coming back from spring break, we're starting to see something that's concerning in the number of cases. Then we will step back. Absolutely.
All righty. Thank you, Dr. Moore. No, no other hands are up, so we will move on here to the first organizational item. This first organizational item is important to me, and I know it's important to a lot of teachers as well. This is like Dr. Moore alluded to. Our resolution from the board really encouraging the state and the governor to reprioritize teachers on the vaccine list. You know, this is a motion that that is a resolution that is not unique here to hundred and central. This has been used around the state. And and I thank the the folks that put it together because this this accurately. And succinctly puts out the feelings of many in this state, and I'd like to read this into the record now. So kind of a motion to approve the following resolution, whereas the Hundred and Central Regional High School Board of Education. Recognizes the United States, the state of New Jersey and local health authorities. As well as the World Health Organization have declared a public health emergency regarding the coronavirus or COVID nineteen pandemic. And whereas the federal and state authorities have put in place guidance detailing the. guidance detailing the precautionary measures schools, schools must implement to stop its spread of this disease. And whereas public schools have a profound impact on millions of students, families and staff and are charged with the care, education, nourishment of their students and are an integral part of the health and safety of our communities. And whereas our district has responded to the challenges brought about by the COVID-19 pandemic, providing students and staff members with the technology and resources necessary to ensure the efficient delivery of education virtually and in person. And whereas the board has a substantial public interest in protecting the health and safety of its students, staff and community, and ensuring that the district can provide staff and students with a safe and effective educational environment that supports student achievement. And whereas the board recognizes that this health emergency made it necessary to close schools and reinvent the educational programs in a virtual setting. And that this may have an adverse impact on student achievement and the emotional and social well-being of students. And whereas the COVID-19 vaccination plan published by the New Jersey Department of Health on December 15th, 2020 prioritizes the availability of vaccines to essential workers in Phase 1B of the vaccine pool. And whereas the school district staff at all levels are essential to the day-to-day operations of this district, responsible for the thorough and efficient education of all students and their social and emotional well-being are critical for vital and in-class instruction and are essential workers. Now therefore, be it resolved, the Hundred and Central Regional High School Board of Education finds finds a substantial public purpose exists to request that Governor Murphy give appropriate priority in the statewide administration of the COVID-19 vaccine to all public school district personnel. The COVID-19 vaccine published by the state of New Jersey can be found on their website. So be resolved that a copy of this resolution shall be forwarded to Assembly Speaker Craig Coughlin, Senate President Steve Sweeney, Governor Phil Murphy, and to the New Jersey School Boards Association. Have a motion in a second, please. Have a motion in a second. Kind of a roll call vote, please, Jim.
Dr. Charny?
Yes.
Mr. Davidson?
You're muted, Bruce.
Yeah.
Mrs. Hughes?
Yes.
Mrs. Kellogg?
Yes.
Mr. Nickel?
Yes.
Dr. Wen?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Panico?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Jim. Now for committee reports, kind of turn it over to the Student Life and Program Committee for their update, please.
Very good. Student Life and Program Committee met a couple of weeks ago. And we have a couple of items that we need to move tonight, get to those items at the end of the report. Briefly, we have as one of the items, a rescinding of early graduation date for a student. Ms. Cangelosi Hayes, Hade provided the information and the reason for this rescindment. In our discussion, it was clear that this is something that we that we need to support. New Student Activity Club. Mr. Brad provided information about a new club developed by students for students who are interested in contributing to student safety at the school. Mr. Brad explained that we have a number of students working with fire departments, emergency medical squads would also be interested. The organization would be part of the school safety team and would be engaged in some safety meetings. The name of the club is still pending. The committee spoke about the need to keep some safety information confidential. We have a 2020, 21 school year calendar revision because emergency days and back to school night was moved from February 18 to February 18 from February 11. The 2122 school calendar year is something we're we're beginning to look at. Dr. Moore explained that this is the time of year when we begin planning and we need to work with the sending districts to align our calendars as much as possible. Dr. Moore said he anticipated that the initial calendar for the 2122 year will be ready in March. Ms. Cangelosi Hade also provided in an update on dual enrollment and articulation agreements with various colleges, including County College and Seton Hall, I believe, was another one. And the the district has new dual enrollment courses in business, computer science, math, world languages and family and consumer science. Ms. Candelosie Hade explained that the district is continuing to work with colleges to offer more credits. I want to point out that in the time that Ms. Candelosie Hade has been in with our district, I believe our our number of courses available through dual enrollment has increased significantly. Quick check what the number was, but I just wanted to put that on record that she needs to be commended for that. About doubling the offerings since she came on board. So thank you for that. Student learning and engagement, we had quite a discussion about the impacts of of the pandemic on learning loss. First of all, Ms. Candelosie Hade and Dr. Moore presented that our teachers meet in PLCs that are often course-specific, such as Algebra 1, English 2, et cetera. Departments and PLCs meet on a weekly basis and focus on revising the curriculum to navigate a critical pathway through the power standards of the state standards learning experiences and accessing in a remote hybrid learning environment. There's an example of a common assessment used in US History 2, which is a document-based question, which is stored in a shared folder that the board members will have access to. And I would encourage you to look at, it's really quite interesting, the work that's being done in performance-based common assessments to help us identify how students are faring on mastering standards. Whereas Aspen, the student information system is not conducive to analysis of standards-based achievement. Lincoln, on the other hand, can do these types of things and administration has been working with staff to introduce Lincoln to them and develop Lincoln for assessing progress. They're currently in the process of administering Linkett's NJSLA mid-year benchmarks to students in English and algebra and geometry. Ms. Candelosie Hade also provided an overview of the data and analysis available in Lincoln. And the committee got to look at the reporting dashboard. The PLCs have begun to use the data in their discussions to inform instruction and curriculum revisions. And again, there's an example in our shared folder that I would encourage you to look at. Dr. Moore then provided a report, which is also in the shared folder on student grades and the link between student benchmark proficiency and current course average. Student failures, it seems, have increased close to 5% since this time last school year, but have decreased since the fall by about 3%. And when course grades were correlated with Lincoln proficiencies, there's evidence of student disengagement from coursework. Which of course necessitates necessitates interventions. And some of these interventions we've talked about tonight, for example, offering a four-day in-person learning program for any student who wants it and providing flexibility in dealing with deadlines that prioritize student growth. And that's it for the Student Life Committee. And thereby we are moving four items tonight, 1-1 through 1-4. We've talked about 1-1, 1-2 is the approval of the School Safety Alliance. 1-3 is the school calendar issues we talked about and 1-4, a move to approve a Gateway to Success Grant of Services administered by the Progressive Center for Independent Living.
Great. Thank you. You have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Alrighty, any discussion on these items? Rob, I appreciate you noting the increase in the academies. That's that's great work. I think the the dual enrollment stuff is critically important. I can't speak enough about it. So that's fantastic. I was shocked at the number. I hadn't got an update on that in a while. So I was really impressed to hear how many we have. If there's no further discussion, Jim, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Dr. Charny?
Yes.
Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hughes?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Nickel?
Yes. Yes.
This is Dr. Wen?
Yes.
Mr. Mr. Richard?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Panico?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Operations and Transportation update, please.
Operations and Transportation Committee met on Tuesday, February 16th in the Little Theater. We had a chance to meet with the accountants that did the audit for our school. And once again, we had no audit recommendations and no corrective action needed. That's really thanks to Jim Gordon and her team. Once again, the school's in a great position financially, and that's that's always a good thing. We had a chance to go over some of the upcoming summer projects, which we are looking to approve contracts for the IMC Phase 2 reconfiguration, clock and bell upgrades, as well as security camera upgrades. There is a project that we are looking to do, a new generator, emergency power for the 910 building. But there's an increase to the scope that we need to do. So we need to approve our project architect SSP to provide additional professional design, construction administration, closeout services for basically the infrastructure, new wiring and such. So everything else as shown on the agenda, and with that, I'd like to move items 2-1 through 2-18.
Thank you, Mr. Nickel. I have a second on that motion. Got it. Couple of things that I wanted to note in here. One of them is 216, that is the application acceptance of FEMA funds for that snowstorm we had a couple of weeks ago. You know, the 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 business office does a a great job finding opportunities for us to to recover revenue like that, recover expenses like that, I guess it would be. So appreciative of that work because that does, you know, those numbers do add up. So I appreciate that. And the resolution on the accountants or the audit, sorry. You know, I know Mr. Nickel noted that it is no recommendations, no action plan. It's been like that for for quite some time, I do believe, Jim. And your office does a fantastic job at at holding those standards, I think. You know, when we sit down with the auditors, they they clearly go through it with a fine-tooth comb. They know every dollar, every penny, they can explain these numbers in detail. So they do a very thorough review. They give us a great presentation. So I've got to say that the fact that they come back with no recommendations and no action plan is is impressive. So good, good work. Any other comments from the board?
I just, I just want to echo some of those thoughts. I mean, I I count my blessings every day for Jimlyn and her her folks over there in the in the little red house on the edge of campus there. Is incredibly arduous and 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 a lot of work that they do, but it's it's always good. And it's it's often thankless, but it it it, you know, it's clearly on display when we have an audit that that shows no findings and and a budget that is responsible and and the the sound financial shape that we're in. I'm just, I'm I'm blessed to be working with all of those folks.
Yeah. And I will say this, when I drive by, usually I'm away from Chick-fil-A. And see, see Jimlyn and and her crew there at all hours of the night. So it's usually like like Jimlyn and her crew, and then Don and his crew are about who's left to to wrap up campus. So they, I know they do put in a tremendous amount of time to make sure that the Ts are crossed and the Is are dotted. Alrighty, Jim. Now that we've gone through that, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Okay. Let me get your pictures back on the screen. Dr. Charny?
Yes.
Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hughes?
Yes.
Mrs. Kellogg?
Yes.
Mr. Nickel?
Yes.
Dr. Wen?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Panico?
Yes. Thank you. Can I have an update from the Personnel Committee, please?
Thank you, Vinnie. Personnel met on February 10th, virtually. We had a brief discussion about district budget objectives, and then we reviewed the following motions. We have a retirement Susan Ryan, 29 and a half years in the district as a school social worker. We certainly thank her for her service and wish her best of luck in the future. We have a couple of contractual appointments, a duty release aide, a Spanish teacher and a full-time para that Dr. Moore gave interim approval for. We have some hourly appointments for ELL after-school programs, SAT review, course instructors and a substitute custodian. Again, some of these positions were given interim approval by Dr. Moore. We have one per diem appointment for a long-term sub in the business department. Interim approval was given by Dr. Moore. We in 3.3 have a Schedule C advisor for a new School Safety Alliance Club that was just approved in Student Life Committee. 3.4, we have our Schedule D coaches for the spring season, one of whom in cheerleading was given interim approval by Dr. Moore. 3.5, we have some salary guide advancements. We do have a correction there on F. Nicole Olbridge is going from MA Step 6 to MA plus 15 Step 6. 3.6, we have professional development, some of which happened already and is now happening. So interim approval was given on those items as well from Dr. Moore. 3.7, we have some curriculum instruction and professional development workshops for staff. Lots of those. 3.8, we have some revisions, which are mostly simple corrections for dates with the hiring of our new Spanish teacher in 3.2A above. We also have a correction there in subsection E for Scott Sacks. His effective date is 12/1/20 to March 31st, 21. 3.9, we have a motion to abolish the social worker position with the retirement of Susan Ryan. And then 3.10, a motion to create a new position for school, new school psychologist. And then I believe we have an addendum 3.11, which is a stipend for our Unified Sports Coordinator, which is funded through the Special Olympics Grant. And with that, I would move 3.1 through 3.10, including the 3.11 Agenda Agenda Addendum.
Second.
Motion in a second. Thank you so much. Any discussion on these items?
I just, just one thing to add with the departure of Sue Ryan and and we'll absolutely miss her. You're you're absolutely right, Mrs. Hughes. What we have the opportunity to do is even out our child study teams, the school social worker and school psychologist positions. So what what by abolishing sort of an an extra school social worker position, we'll we'll come out of this with three social worker positions instead of four. And then we'll be able to have three school psychologist positions and then be able to form even teams with with those positions or in our child study team. So it's 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 something we can do at this moment, but it's it's, you know, small as a silver lining in in saying goodbye to to Ms. Ryan.
Definitely. Thank you. Hearing no further comment, can I have a roll call vote, please, Jim?
Dr. Charny?
Yes.
Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hughes?
Yes.
Mrs. Kellogg?
Yes.
Mr. Nickel?
Yes.
Dr. Wen?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Panico?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Any additional business or board comments at this time? Mr. Donald?
Yes, if I could, um, the Red Committee doesn't have any items to move, but I could give a brief update on the work that we're continuing. Okay, so just briefly, this week, staff-wide training in racism and bias is happening this week on Thursday afternoon. There are two additional dates for follow-up training with all staff through through the second semester. Training in race-based traumatic stress and counseling continues with Rutgers seeking additional partners and specialists to bring to our school in this innovative work. Training with our vice principals and others in recognizing and responding to bias incidents is occurring as well. As we finalize a scope of work with a potential partner. Indoor gathering limits are still a problem in order for us to convene our larger Racism Equity and Diversity Group Committee. But we are preparing a panel event with various district partners from legal to training partners to provide more detail on all of our projects. This may have to be an online event. We'll see. We're also working on some possible options for a board retreat to discuss various aspects of the work. And to continue to focus our efforts on principles and goals and just really broaden the conversation to include everyone some more. And lastly, we just want to, you know, just note that we recognize there's some concern that has arisen around this year's selection of South Pacific as the Spring Musical. The show has, we know, historically been recognized as groundbreaking for its forward-looking treatment of anti-racist themes. But it also suffers from concerns about stereotypical portrayals and other issues as a product of its times, the late 1940s. The district is working with representatives from various student groups representing minority and marginalized populations to make this the most powerful show for Central. And to also really capitalize on this opportunity. This opportunity that the show presents to continue to explore these themes and, you know, the students and faculty and staff at Central are amazing. And certainly up to this challenge, and I think it's a really exciting opportunity to see what comes of it. So that's it.
Great. Thank you for the update. A lot in there. Now, additional comment from me. I did get a couple. Emails today about people having trouble finding the phone number to dial into the meeting. So, you know, just for everybody that's out there, if you go to the district website, there's a pop-up that comes up. If you click on that pop-up, it will bring you right to a page with the agenda and the Zoom link and the dial-in numbers. It's all right there. So the folks that did reach out to me, I did just shoot them the number back, but it's always there on that Board of Education page. That Ms. Tucker puts up for us, so that is there. If we ever, if you ever need it. Now is the time on the agenda for the second residence forum, similar to the first one. 30 minutes max. Everybody will ask to keep their comments to three minutes or less and not speak twice unless those. Everybody who has wanted to speak has been heard. We do have both the forum as well as the Zoom. So if you're in the Zoom, either raise your hand, or if you're on your phone, press star nine. That will raise your hand for you. We will go through or read what's on the forum, and then I'm just going to go into the Zoom. Top-down, whatever order that they're in on the attendee list, and then once no more hands are up, we'll move on. So in the. In the forum that's on the website, we have one response. It is from Sarah Griffiths. She says, "I'm concerned about the great differences in grading policies in the different subject areas during hybrid learning, specifically the math department. Most subjects have a formative summative breakdown that is about 40-60, which seems fair, since generally speaking, all work is being done at home. With little opportunity for teachers to monitor students or assist them. In contrast, my son's Algebra II class has a 20-80 split, which is putting all the weight on tests, which there have been very few of this year, only four to date as of February 22. I find it worrisome that many students who have As and Bs in all of their courses and attend the class daily and complete all homework are failing math. I think the math department needs to take a hard look at the grading policy during this hybrid learning year and make adjustments." Thank you, Sarah Griffiths, freshman parent. That is everything that we have from the forum, so I will go over to the Zoom. We do have one person in the Zoom, Fabiana Rincon. So if we could pull her up, the floor is yours. Please state your name and address for the record, and you are good to go.
Hi, my name is Fabiana Rincon. My address is 11 London Dairy Drive, Flemington, New Jersey, 0882. I did have a statement I wanted to read to the board, but one of my co-owners-in-chief and good friends, Anjali Vajan, is also on the Zoom call, and we wanted to read that statement together. So if it's possible, if she could also be unmuted, that would be great. If not, I'll just read the statement.
So Fabiana, thank you. I'm going to try to see if that works. Okay?
Okay, thank you.
I'm going to hit, and we'll see if Anjali comes on. All right, so I think she's muted, but there you are.
Hi, can you hear me? Hi, I'm Anjali Vajan, and my address is 8 Smith Road, Flemington, New Jersey, 0882. So, good evening. We are Anjali Vajan and Fabiana Rincon, 200 in Central seniors, serving as editors-in-chief of The Lamp and advocates for social justice. In the past year, hate crimes against Asian-Americans and Pacific Islanders have risen 1,900%. These hate crimes are not only fueled by racist rhetoric due to the pandemic, but by microaggressions that many do not even realize they are perpetrating. A microaggression is a statement, action, or incident regarded as an instance of indirect, subtle, or unintentional discrimination against members of a marginalized group such as a racial or ethnic minority.
Racist accents, skin lightening, dramatic eyeliner, broken English, seeing young women of color not as characters but as submissive and dutiful props. These microaggressions have been fueled by 100 and Central's theater department for years and have gone unchecked for far too long. As seniors at Central, we have gotten the opportunity to meet many people and join many clubs. And though we have reached a point where we would be satisfied to leave Central, knowing we took every opportunity to make positive changes that we were given. We are no longer satisfied. Up until recently, we felt as if we haven't been heard as we discuss these issues with administration, whether it be by modifying or changing this year's musical, South Pacific. Or the fact that us, as editors-in-chief of The Lamp, were delayed in publishing an opinion piece regarding these acts of racism and how students genuinely feel about it.
As minority students living in a predominantly white school district, we have witnessed racism, we have dealt with the stereotypes. And we have sat through school musicals watching Orientalism and mockery happen right in front of the administration's face. The community is impacted by this. Our own students are hurt by this. Before we graduate from Central this year, we want to see a difference, not just a committee being made, not just a brief email about a racist action with no consequences or no follow-up. Real change, which as of now is all student-driven. By bringing this issue to this meeting, we hope to spread more awareness and ultimately push for change.
Four years ago, we sat in the auditorium and watched students in yellowface make a complete mockery of people of color during the school's production of Anything Goes. We stand in front of you today, virtually, to make sure that this year's class of freshmen do not have to stand here four years from now to battle the 100 and Central Theater Department's next show of racism or enabling of microaggressions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Dr. Moore, I believe you mentioned you had some comments, correct?
Yeah, no, I definitely. You know, Fabiana and Anjali, thank you, first of all. And, you know, I recognize. Recognize your concerns about Anything Goes from a few years ago, and I'm deeply, deeply sorry. The things that you describe are wrong and can't happen ever again, not just on our stage, but in our school in any way. And you talked about microaggressions, but the kinds of exaggerated performances of stereotypes that you're talking about do more. Do more damage than microaggressions and much more. And I just want to recognize that what you're talking about is more serious than than microaggression, and I recognize that as well. I want to reiterate what Mrs. O'Donnell pointed out, and I think both of you know too, because I know you're involved in these conversations with us as we move forward. This week and beyond, you know, South Pacific is really important for us and for our anti-racism work here at Central. And as she mentioned, and I'll reiterate, that show is known for being groundbreaking in its stance against racism and prejudice. Even though it's forward-looking in those themes, it's also, and she noted this, it's also a product of its time. It's a very different show from Anything Goes, but it puts out some of the same traps, especially if it's not handed carefully. And I promise you, I promise you that everyone here is committed to doing it right, and as Mrs. O'Donnell shared. And as you both know, you know, we've been gathering representatives from our various student unions and groups together to help guide us on the best directorial choices and the best learning opportunities to work alongside the show and a lot more. There's no doubt, you know, I have no doubt, and I have no qualm about recognizing that we have a lot to reckon with. You know, a truly. Comprehensive approach to racism and prejudice, the kind of approach that we've been working at. It really demands that we don't just have a board committee, we don't have new clubs, we don't just do staff training, we don't just, you know, all of these things that we're doing. To equip students to combat racism and to be a more nurturing community for everybody. You know, we have to do more than all of that. We have to find every opportunity to align our work to our goals, and in South Pacific, we see that kind of opportunity. The opportunity to take a show that is a strong stance and really leverage student voices into an amazing thing. You know, from 1948 or 49, whenever the show first came out until now, you know, what have we achieved and what's left to do? Art has a really strong way of helping us answer those kinds of questions, and that's been a piece that's been missing from our conversations in some ways. And I think you mentioned that students are at the fore of this. Students are pushing for this. Students are leading this. That's exactly, in a lot of ways, the way it should be. And, you know, we want to be right there along your side and helping you make those changes. So I thank you for your comment tonight, and your continued commitment around this work. I really look forward to continuing to work with you and others in our efforts to make this really a groundbreaking project for 100 and Central. So thank you both for sharing that tonight, and I think we have a meeting later this week. We have a meeting tomorrow, I believe. I'll see, I'll see you both. I think I'll see you both there. So thank you both, and much more to come.
I just want to say to them as well, you know, I know the difficulty it takes to stand up and, or even virtually stand up in front of a board and speak, and that's a difficult topic to speak on. So I appreciate that, and I look forward to hearing, you know, the progress that comes out of the meetings, both tomorrow and in the future. As we move forward on this, on this plate. So thank you, Dr. Moore. Thank you, ladies. Appreciate it. I see no other hands up in the meeting at this time. Dr. Moore, you see none as well, correct?
Let me just. You are correct. I see no other hands and no star nines. Nope.
Perfect. So with that, I'll move, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn to executive session. We'll be in there for about 45 minutes to discuss a personnel item. There will be no action when we return, so we will come back to this room just to adjourn, but nothing's going to happen. We're just going to adjourn.
Mr. Panico, I'll do a quick negotiations update as well.
And a negotiations update. So personnel negotiations, 45 minutes, no action. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
I have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Hi.
All right, board members, you should have a link to the executive session in your inbox. Head over there, and we will meet you in that room. All righty, can I have a motion to return to public session, please?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Great. Can I have a motion to adjourn, please?
So moved.
Second.
Great. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Good night. Bruce, we're done. Good night, everybody.
Everybody, thank you.